The Winnetka Village Council Virtual Study Session for September 8th, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and remind everybody to turn off your ringer on your cellphones if you have it there. And first order of business is to check with Kristin to see if there is any public comment for this evening that is not on the agenda.
We did not receive any public comment in advance. We do have one member of the audience. Mark Melio has joined us, so I'm going to unmute Mark's microphone.
Mark?
Mark, I'm asking you to unmute, so if you would like to provide public comments, you can unmute your microphone and speak at this time.
On any item that's not on the agenda.
No, I'm good. Thank you very much. It's nice to see some familiar faces.
Good to have you here.
Thanks. Mark, you'll have an opportunity to talk about bond refinancing if you'd like when the time comes.
Well, maybe he had a dream too.
Yeah.
He's 150 people all in one.
Think I need a vacation? Okay. Okay, item number three, 2013 slash 2014 general obligation bond refunding opportunities discussion. In 2013 and 2014, the village issued two series of tax exempt stormwater municipal bonds totaling 16.5 million. Recently, rates on municipal debt have decreased substantially and refinancing at this time could save money, could save the village a significant amount of money. Here to review the refinancing options are Tim Sloth, our Finance Director, and Kevin McCannah, the Chairman of Spear Financial. Before we get going, I definitely want to give a shout out to Bob Dearborn on this. I had always expected that this was a conversation that we were going to have as part of the stormwater discussion, but Bob helped me appreciate the opportunity and the urgency to move this along and not have it drag along while we try to assemble all the necessary information for that stormwater discussion. So, Bob, I really appreciate it and hopefully you appreciate that we were able to find a quick spot for it on the agenda because I do think it's important and I think there's some good things to talk about here. So, thanks again, really appreciate it. All right, so Tim and Kevin, it's your show. Why don't you go ahead and do what you got to do?
Thank you, President Rentsch. Kristin, I want to start the slideshow. We are here tonight to discuss the opportunity to do an advanced refund of the village's outstanding 2013, 2014 general obligation bonds. The plan is to review the current amount of outstanding debt and annual debt service, go over options available now to refinance the outstanding debt, and then turn it over to our financial advisor to go into further detail about the mechanics of an actual bond sale and follow up on any questions that the council may have. Slide. If you want to go to the next slide, actually. So, to review the current village debts, the village has two sets of, two series of outstanding stormwater bonds, the series 2013 and the series 2014. In total, these bonds were issued at interest rates between 2% and 5% for a total amount of $16.5 million with 4.16 million paid to date in an outstanding principal at this point of $12.3 million. And it should be noticed that that outstanding principal amount is as of the end of this year. There is a principal payment in December, so as of December 31st of this year, the outstanding principal will be $12.3 million. And then interest paid to date of almost 4.4 million. These bonds were tax exempt general obligation municipal bonds, meaning that the investors on these bonds would not have to pay tax on any interest earned. And since they don't have to pay any tax on the interest earned, they're able to be issued at a lower interest rate compared to bonds that are taxable bonds. The bonds were issued with a call date of December 15th, 2021. Slide. So, as the previous slide showed, the total amount outstanding of village debt and the total debt amount, this slide is showing what the annual debt service is. And the debt service is the annual amount of principal and interest. It's similar concept to the villages to a mortgage payment. So, for 2020, the annual debt service, principal and interest is $1.3 million. And you can see, this chart shows the total amount of debt service on an annual basis. And you can see in the beginning years of the bond, between 2014 and 2023, the annual amount was about $1.3 million a year. And then between 2024 and 2040, the amount due on the bonds was the interest portion only, and that totaled less than $500,000. And then towards the end of the bonds, between 2041 and 2046, the total principal and interest rose up to about $2 million a year. So, if you look at the actual shape of the chart, it resembles a barbell in shape, so that's why we'll be referring it to as a barbell structure. And what this intended to do was to lock in the long-term portion of the debt at what was expected to be in a time of expected rising interest rates at a favorable rate, and then also establish the short-term portion, thereby kind of establishing your annual debt service payment for budgeting purposes, for planning purposes. And that middle portion where it goes down and you're only paying interest, that was intended to be able to, if the village needed to issue additional debt, that that would provide some capacity for additional annual debt service. So, this is the current structure of the annual debt service of the bonds that are outstanding at this point. Next slide. So, in reviewing various refunding options, so again, the call date on these bonds, our outstanding bonds, is December 15th, 2021. So, that would be the earliest we could call and then reissue tax-free municipal debt would be on that date. But if we go a different route, we actually have a few options to be able to refund these now. And what are refunding means is similar concept to refinancing your mortgage. So, when I say refunding, I mean, you know, refinancing essentially. So, the first option would be a taxable general obligation refunding at 10-years level debt service. Option two that we explored was a taxable general obligation refunding at 20-years level debt service. And then option three, we attempted to put together a debt service schedule that was similar to what was currently outstanding, the barbell shape for 26 years, to kind of give a sense of an apples-to-apples comparison. And then, of course, you know, a fourth option, we don't have to act on any of these options now. We don't have to proceed with the refunding at this time. We can always wait and reevaluate in 2021 when the bonds come due, or when the call date of the bonds. Next slide. So, option one, again, a taxable GEO refunding bond, 10-years level debt. Average coupon on this would be 1.47% for an estimated net present value of $5.2 million. And I'm sure, I know Kevin's watching, I'm sure he wants me to note that all the numbers that we talk about tonight are estimates. The bond market can change pretty quickly, so this is just estimates of what the market looks like today. The advantages to option number one, it provides the greatest amount of savings. We had to lock in debt service for 10 years at a very low interest rates, historically speaking, and then similar annual debt service requirements to what we're currently paying, a little bit higher, but similar in scope to what the village is currently paying. The disadvantage is that it does consume a large portion of the village's existing stormwater utility. Next slide. For option two, again, taxable general obligation refunding bonds, this time for 20 years and level debt as well. The average coupon on this would be 2.14% and a net present value savings of $3.8 million. The advantages of this option, again, significant amount of savings, debt service is locked in for 20 years at low interest rate, reduced annual debt service requirements. Currently, we're paying about $1.3 million. That would be, go down to $780,000 per year over 20 years, level that entire time. And by having a debt level debt structure at that 780,000 level, it preserves additional annual debt service capacity for future bond issuances that would be under existing stormwater utility rates. The disadvantage to option two, a disadvantage would be it's simply less net present value savings compared to option number one. Next slide. Option three, again, a taxable general obligation refunding bond. This is the 26-year option that was structured similar to the current outstanding bonds that we have, the barbell structure. Average coupon of 2.84% with net present value savings of $2.4 million. The advantages, again, significant amount of savings, not as much as one and two, but still that's a significant amount of savings, locks in long-term debt at 3%, or less, which again is a historical, historically a great rate, reduced annual debt service requirements, and provides a substantial annual debt service capacity for future debt issuances. So, again, the disadvantage though is that the savings that it generates is not as great as options one and two. Next slide. So, this slide shows a summary of the different options along with our recommendation. Option one, again, is the 10-year at a 1.47% average rate for $5.2 million of net present value savings at an annual debt service of 1.4 million. Option two is the 20-year at an average rate of 2.14% net present value savings of 3.8 million, annual debt service of 780,000. And then option three is the 26-year barbell structured and average rate of 2.84% net present value savings of 2.4 million, and then the annual debt service varies year to year, anywhere from 323,000 in interest only to $1.96 million towards the end of the cycle. Our recommendation at this time would be to pursue an advanced bond refunding using a taxable option number two, the 20-year general obligation level debt. We feel it does provide significant present value savings. That's the $3.8 million. It's not as significant as option one, but the secondary consideration is the annual debt service amount. So, this is the amount the village has to pay on an annual basis that we need to support with revenues from the stormwater fund. So, we'll be decreasing this annual debt service from 1.3 million down to 780,000. So, that provides us some flexibility. So, as we get to our stormwater financing and we're starting to map out the future of the projects, and if at some point it becomes clear that we'd have to issue additional debt, we do have some capacity under our current revenue structure to be able to issue some more debt within the 20-year cycle. So, it gives us a good amount of flexibility, but also provides some very significant present value savings. So, that would be our recommended option would be number two, to proceed with the refunding at a 20-year level debt. Next slide. So, at this point, I do want to introduce Kevin McCannah, he's the Chairman from Spear Financial. He's going to review this in more detail, specifically the mechanics of the sale, along with the general timeline for a sale of the bond issuance, estimated fees that encompass the bond sale, and then follow up for any questions and answers that you might have on bonds.
Okay, good evening.
Kristin, can you restore the screen? I think it'd be easier for everybody. Thank you. Hi, Kevin, go ahead.
Hi, okay. Well, good evening. I've been working on your bond issues for a long time, so this bond issue would be pretty much like past issues where, once you make a decision, we will pull together the official statement, which is the offering document that has all the information about the village. We then work with whoever your bond counsel is, and as the memo from Tim says, it's traditionally been Chapman Color. And then the next thing is to go get the bond rating. Your rating has been AAA for quite a while. It's the late 80s, I think it was, and there should be no reason why they come into question, but you know, you have to go through the process anyhow. And then, when everything's ready, if it's a competitive sale, we take the bids on a day, morning of a council meeting, bring the results that evening with the recommended best bidder, and you vote on a bond ordinance. If it's a negotiated sale, and you have not traditionally done negotiated sales, if a negotiated sale, then you would, we'd still sell the bonds that day or the day before by negotiation, and then you would, again, go through the approval of the bond ordinance that night. And about two weeks later, you get the funds. In this case, because it's refunding, the funds will go into an escrow account to be used to purchase US Treasuries, which would all mature on or before December 2021 to pay off the old debt. And that's pretty much the mechanics. Does anyone have any questions about that part of it? Okay, then, I think what the next thing was the fees and positive issuance. All of these are estimates because we don't know the size of the issue yet. It's approximately $12 million, but through bidding and things, there may be a premium or whatever. But approximately, a typical underwriting fee would be about $100,000 on this, and then the cost of issuance will be just under $100,000. That takes care of all the fees. The underwriting fee can be all over the place in terms of the underwriter puts in an interest rate and a fee, and they then determine, and then the best wins, and it's the overall interest rate. Like Tim was estimating the 20-year, he was mentioning that our estimate's the 2.14%. Well, if somebody bids 2.14%, and that's the best bid, they win. We don't care really what their fee is because it's the total cost to the village of interest and fees, the underwriting fee, brought back to today's dollars. And I guess, are there any questions about that?
Okay, Kevin, in today's world, what would you expect the interest would be from the underwriters to be involved in this on a competitive basis?
Oh, I think this is going to go really well because we're seeing sales with five, six, seven bidders, and we do this on the internet, spearauction.com, kind of like eBay. You know, you open up for 15 minutes, and it, people, some people put in their bids right away. Usually, people wait to the end. They put it, they start putting in bids, they don't get to see what the other bids are, but they do get to see their ranking. So, if they are second, they may put in a second bid, or another bid, or a third bid or fourth bid to try to get to be first. We've had sales that have gone on past the cutoff date, because again, it's like eBay. If somebody tops the best bid with two minutes to go, or less than two minutes to go, then it gets extended two minutes. So, it's been, and it's been good, and you know, we're talking taxable bonds, and the market has gotten to the point where 20%, 30% of the market is taxable bonds, and they're selling very well, in part just because of where interest rates are. You know, you're paying, somebody who buys your bonds gets a AAA bond. If it's taxable, they're making 75, 85 basis points more than buying Treasuries. And while investing in taxable municipals at 2% isn't terribly great, it's certainly better than buying 1% Treasuries, if that's your business.
Good, thank you.
So, the fees aren't as important because it's the total bid?
Yeah, I mean, we have underwriters that come in and say, oh, I could have negotiated this sale at half that fee, half the fee of the underwriting, and we don't care because the interest rate wouldn't have been that good.
Right.
So, I don't care whether somebody bids a dollar a bond or $10 a bond, if they have the best overall interest rate, we're fine.
So, we didn't talk about the option of doing nothing because of the, what the anticipated interest rate would be in a year and a half. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure, sure. You know, once somebody puts this on the table, you have to make a decision.
Right.
Decide to do nothing or deciding to do something. And it's difficult. It's difficult because it's really kind of a policy decision, but the interest rates, we figured it's about a 75 basis points, 3/4 of a percent. So, where we are today, if rates rise by less than 3/4 of a percent, you would be better off waiting till a year, a year from now to do a tax exempt. The problem is, you don't know.
Right.
Maybe it's going to be, you know, with everybody's second guessing presidential elections, whatever's going to happen in the future, I don't know. I mean, so basically, we know today, there's quite a lot of money on the table to save. You just don't know. And we have clients who say, look, we're just going to follow the rules. We'll wait till the call date and we'll refine it then. But the market has gotten to be such a huge taxable market these days because there are so many entities, so many municipal entities doing taxable refundings. People are looking at these rates and saying, tax exempt, taxable, we don't care, let's grab the cash, and let's just lock this in. And if you do it, you don't look back. You just, next year, you don't think about it.
Oh, no, I totally understand. I just wanted you to talk about that option because we hadn't actually discussed it. So, thank you.
And if you do it this year, we'll put in a 78-year call, which means that in seven to eight years, you can do this again. You could do it before seven to eight years if you want to do it taxable again. You could do it in seven to eight years if you want to do it at the call date, you could do it tax exempt. And there is, the GFO, the Government Finance Services Association and other organizations keep trying to get tax exempt refundings back, but the Congress keeps saying, show us the money. If we give you this refunding, possibly, if we renew your ability to do refundings, we're going to lose, the Treasury's going to lose revenue, and so we don't want to give it to you. And so, I don't see it happening. And people have gotten really comfortable, and when you were talking about interest rates like this, and we're selling new money bond issues, you know, the 2%, 20 years, 2%. This is, rates are so low, it's hard to just say, we need to stop, but you know, it's a policy thing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Questions, other questions?
Kevin, let me ask you a question, and we may get into this, but the 75 basis point, you know, break even, is there any way to, and someone in the business asked me this today, is there, is there any way to sort of hedge that for the next 14 months and then do a tax-free issue a year from now?
Yeah, hedging is not well-developed in the municipal business.
Just a sec.
There have been a couple attempts, sure, there are a couple of attempts at doing hedgings. It doesn't work very well. What's happened instead is, you know, some banks, which will buy the bonds today on a forward delivery basis.
Right.
But they're charging three to five, maybe even six basis points per month. So, you say to them, I'll sell to you in a year, I'll sell to you today for delivery in a year, you're looking at, you know, 60, 70 basis point fee to the bank, not that they really hold it, I think they lay it off to some investor, you know, it's all, so other people do the hedging, but there's no easy way to hedge municipal bonds, certainly not when you're talking $12 billion. You know, you might get something fancy if you were talking 1.2 billion, but it's just not, it's just not something at this level that we do.
Okay.
And just, just so I'm clear that, because I'm leaning towards action now, but the tax-free, what is the, what is the benefit and the, you know, what does that mean in dollars and cents to us if we waited and did the tax-free?
Well, if you waited and did it, and rates, depends on how much the rates move.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't have a real good answer to that because it's just how much the rates move. If rates moved 75 basis points, the answer is, you'd be the same as you were today. If rates moved more than 75, you would be worse off. If rates moved less than 75, you'd save something, but exactly how much, it just depends about what, how rates move and how rates, how the yield curve shifts. Does it all go up 75 or 50 or whatever? So, it's really kind of hard to quantify, I mean, because too many options.
Feel free to jump in, I can only see half of you on the screen, so if you've got questions.
Chris, are we open, are we opening this up for full questions at this point?
Yeah, I mean, this is it. Let's do it.
So, Kevin, and I thought the analysis was great, and this is, I mean, I think the savings are substantial, and I think we certainly have a fiscal responsibility to review this. I mean, it's, we'd be negligent if we didn't, I think. So, this is a good, good topic to be reviewing. What, what have we matched? I mean, and I can see the argument for the 20-year level, and I think that that could be the good, the good decision here, but what if we, we matched the ultimate maturity of the existing bonds, and we went out 25 years, let's say, on a level payment basis? What do you think that would do to the analysis? What would it do to our annual payments? I don't know exactly what the, you know, the curve, you know, for another five years where that would take us, and, you know, if we did that, I mean, I'm kind of thinking also about if we, if there is stormwater financing, and Rob, I don't know if you think that, you know, when that might happen, 12 to 24 months, whatever it might be, but I'm thinking about, you know, allowing for the most flexibility at that time for a bond structure or two, and maybe if we stretch this out, and it made sense, that could, you know, provide some flexibility as well.
Well, I think a couple of things. If you added the five or six years, I suspect you'd knock off maybe $100,000 a year in terms of the debt service. Instead of 780, maybe you're 650.
Okay.
That's a reasonable guess, I think. Interest rates aren't going to be that much different because it's pretty level out there. Your overall savings will go down because you're adding more interest at the end. The...
Is there an appetite for that? Is there an appetite for 25-year AAA?
Yes, you could, you could certainly do 25-year paper. I think that's, it'd certainly be saleable, and your savings would go down a little bit, but you could certainly do it. Yeah, I think doing that, I mean, it's almost, you get back to what kind of dollars are you talking about for the stormwater? You know, in terms of needs and such, and... But yeah, whether you've got a platform of 780 a year or a platform of 650 a year, both bond issues are saleable, both bond issues lock in interest rates that will be under 3%, and they're both doable.
So, what would, I mean, looking at the potential need for additional financing, would the difference between 20 versus 25, would that, would there be any impact upon our need to go for additional revenue?
Well, if it reduces your cost by 100 or $125,000 a year, then it gives you that much extra flexibility when you do another bond issue, because you've got an extra $125,000 of revenue that you haven't used up in this. So, you could, which is roughly like a million dollars, million and a half annually.
Right, and I'm looking at the barbell funding that they had structured before. It's, to me, it's a little alarming about how much more, you know, interest is paid in the total, you know, by, by people, you know, in another generation or two. So by, by maintaining a little bit more funding flexibility, you know, over, over that, those 20 years, we could potentially save that, that interest payment down the road, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the barbell, you know, the barbell was really built to be filled up.
Right.
A really good plan. It just didn't happen.
Right.
Well, the, one of the things on the, if I'm reading this right, so the average life, Kevin, of our existing bonds right now, because of that, those late payments, 20 years, is about 19 years. The, is the average life, if I read this correctly.
And that's.
And the, the 20 year level is about 11 years. Average life, because it's being paid off as you go along. So I guess my, my thought is, or my thought was, as I, as I saw that big, you know, we wanted to get a little more apples to apples here with our existing bonds in terms of the life of the bonds. And we stretched it out a little bit. And again, I don't know how steep that curve is if you're going from 214 to, you know, 250 or whatever. I don't know how, what it is. You know, and if it, if it made sense, then you're, I mean, I think you are, no, you know, it would be hard to, you know, we could look back in a year and a quarter, say, wow, what a bunch of dumbbells. But, you know, it's just, it's such an enormous savings. And it's such an unusual period of time. In your career, you've probably never seen anything like this in terms of these yields. And.
That's for sure.
I mean, and so it's, and these, as you mentioned, these issues are coming daily. You know, taxable refundings and so on. And so it's, it's, it's really, but I guess the question is, one of the factors is what gives us the most flexibility if we're going to file this up in the 18 months?
Right.
You know, with $20 million of tax free bonds or something like that. If we stretch it out a bit, does that give us not just the savings, but in terms of the structure of what a subsequent deal might look like? Does that give us some flexibility?
I suppose it increases your flexibility a little bit. I mean, you know, going, the most extreme would be to do it in 10 years, you know.
Right.
Break the bank for Tim. But that's, you know, but so, so anytime you, anything to go past the 10 years. But and each time you reduce the debt service, you're giving yourself more room for future debt, but you're also giving yourself more cash for ongoing O and M projects of the, of the program. So. But there's, so I don't know if there's a magic between 20 years, 25 years, 26 years, whatever. I don't think there's a, it's a whole lot. I mean, it's just, it's a little less savings upfront. But when you're looking at some pretty enormous numbers anyhow in terms of savings. So, you know, we, we look at refundings trying to save 5, 10% of the principal amount as a ratio which shows at the bottom of these charts. And the 20 year one, we're talking 33%. So if you reduce it to, to make it like 25 years, maybe, maybe you're down to 20, 25% savings. But there's, from flexibility, I suppose, the longer the better. But my preference, if you're going to go past the 20 years, that, I, I think it'd be nice to go just to the 25 years, which would be one year short of where you are now. Just a minor thing, but it would, it would be nice to be able to say the rating agencies were shortening the refunding by a year.
Okay.
So I guess looking back with, with knowledge now, is there anything different we would do now versus the way this thing was set up beginning with?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess I'm trying not to make the same mistake twice. And what, I just want to make sure we, we take those lessons and apply them if we can to what we're doing going forward.
Well, the, the plan for the original was to have a second tranche of funding. So we did the 13, 14s within one month. End of 13, beginning of 14. Because everyone was sure there was going to be a fill in issue. Because the planning on it really was one giant rectangle and we just cut out pieces of it. So as long as you are all on board for doing a level debt service, I don't think it could make the same situation because even if you have a level debt service, well, it's over 10, 20, 25 years. So long as you don't, even if you don't come up with another bond issue. If you said, look, we're going to do all stormwater, pay as you go. You're fine. You're not anticipating another bond issue by doing this. You're putting yourself in good shape for another bond issue, but you don't need another bond issue for this program to work.
And we've actually left ourselves with enough room to borrow another nine million bucks at these rates a year or two down the line. And still not end up having to change our fee structure at all back to the residents. Because if we're saving, what, would you say, Kevin, close to a half million was it?
The 20 year was $470,000 a year in that, in that interim period. So yeah, yeah, you're saving. I'm sorry, that was 300 something. So yeah, but you're, you're saving enough that you could do more bonds. And if you're at 650 and you're, yeah, it's between eight and nine million dollars. Because you're going from a million three today down to say 650 or 750. Yeah, I'll get you eight, nine million dollars. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Can't beat that with a stick.
I can, I can. No, I mean.
So Kevin, what would you?
We need it. Kevin, when would you, so you go through the, the, the bond council, the credit ratings and so on. When do you have to make the final decision on the structure? Can you go out?
We, we, we would want to have the final decision within, say, 30 days, I think. Because if, assuming we were going to sell in six weeks, we want to have the final decision so we could post the official statement in 30, 35 days. We can always tell the rating agency it's $12 billion, it looks like this and change it. Bond council can always change their stuff up to the very day of sale. But putting it out in the market, we'd like to, we'd like, it's better to say, here's what we're selling that. Here's what we're selling. We're going to change it tomorrow. So let's say 30, 35 days.
So if you had policy direction that, that, you know, that if the group felt so inclined that we should move forward with the refinancing and we should look for level payments out 20 to 25 years, the issue of whether it's 20 or 23 or 25 can be done in 30 days.
Sure. And we can rerun numbers.
Right.
Under any, under limited circumstances, under variations, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
This is sort of like an easy one. Thank you, Bob.
Sort of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, normally like there's trade offs, like option one is you do this and it sucks this way. Option two is it sucks less than this way. But this one is just, we save money and I really appreciate you guys spotting what was going on and bringing it to us.
I agree, Andy. I mean, if, if I think the average, if, if I can assure you, the average Weneka resident doesn't realize you spent four and a half million dollars on interest. You probably have a freaking heart attack, as I am. But especially when we see what's dumped and done with it. But I, I think taking this, taking advantage of these historic level rates, we'd be foolish not to make this happen, start saving our gold money.
Do we have any public comment? Do we have public comment?
I'm sorry, Penny, it was taking me a moment. I, I, no worries. Mark, I'm going to ask you to unmute. We have one person in the audience. You're unmuted now, Mark.
Great, thank you. No, I think you, it was fascinating for me to watch this unfold. And I work with, as a financial advisor myself, and I've been in the business for about 30 years. So I can appreciate the, the push me pull use here. But I think that a good decision, I don't think you can make a bad decision, but I think 20 years is a great part of the curve. If you really pay attention to where rates are out longer in the 25 and 30 year level, I think you'll get some significant savings in 20 years, gives you flexibility. And I agree that you should do this in advance as opposed to waiting until next year. You just, there's different components of interest rate risk. One is the underlying index, let's call it the US Treasuries. The other is the municipal credit spread, which, you know, in no time, people are going to start to realize that we just spent a heck of a lot of money on COVID and the economy. And we're going to find ourselves in a weaker position and who knows what that's going to translate into in terms of interest rates. So making, taking that risk off the table now makes a lot of sense. So, well done, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So any other thoughts, guys? I'm comfortable with option two, but I'd love to hear, I'd love to hear arguments to the contrary. Or Bob, you sound like you want to, you know, tweak it a little bit, but I mean.
Well, I don't think you need to commit to, I mean, I think you can commit to option two. And over the next two or three weeks, I mean, you know, Kevin can come back and say, hey, you know, what things have shifted? The curve's flattened out there. You know, you're, you're, you're not going to lose that much savings if you go to 23 year. I mean, I would leave a little discretion over this 30 day period. But I think if we end up with option two at, at these kind of levels, I, it's a no brainer. And, but I would, I, what I'm hearing is that he has flexibility for a period of time here, you know, to ultimately come back with, you know, the, the sweetest spot.
Understand. Just thinking of Rob's last comment about the $4 million. And yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very interest adverse too, Rob. So I mean, any money that we don't have to pay to somebody else is, is music to my ears.
Yeah.
But again, if there's, if there's some efficiencies by tweaking it a couple of years, I could definitely see that too. Penny, you seem kind of in that, in that thought process too.
Definitely. And certainly I leave it to the experts relative to what the final, you know, 20 versus 24. But, you know, given the circumstances nationally, internationally, I think we, we should go, go for this. And, you know, I mean, we can't see the future, but this sure seems to be the best, the best plan at this point. So I'm completely on board with that.
Jack, what are you thinking?
I think option two sounds like the best way to go. I mean, I'm not a financial guy. But from what I picked up, option two seems good. I like the idea of paying it off more quickly. But if that creates too much trouble, obviously, you know, we can't go that route.
To Jack, to Jack's point about the, I'm just playing devil's advocate about paying it off sooner in the 10 year and getting $5 million savings. I guess my question becomes, I don't, I'd have to look at this in the total context of what our budget is and how much it would scrap us versus saying, hey, this is our commitment. And this is what we need to do to achieve the greatest savings.
Well, it really doesn't affect the budget, Rob, because this is, you know, this debt service is generated from a, the stormwater fee. So the problem is, is that the 10 year, I loved it too from an interest standpoint. But I think we end up actually having to raise fees under that, under that scenario. Is that right, Rob?
I don't think we'd have to raise fees, but it would certainly start to erode our ability to fund operations and maintenance at the level that we're funding it at now. So it, it takes, it reduces the amount of flexibility for the, for the operation of the stormwater utility fund. And there isn't much margin there as you go forward for future. So if you have, if we have another debt issuance, say in two to three years, you're definitely, if you're going to have the utility pay for it, you would have to raise rates for sure at that point. Option two gives you, creates capacity within that fund not to have to raise rates for a subsequent issue depending upon the amount of that issue. That makes sense?
Yeah, yes.
Kevin, can you get, can, can we get this, if we move policy forward tonight, can we get this issued before the election?
Maybe at the second meeting in October. What date would that be?
That's before the election.
So what would, what would that date be?
Bear with me. I think that would be October 13th, which is also the night we have scheduled for stormwater, stormwater financing.
Well, there you go.
You do have, well, that's, that's one month away. That's a real, that's going to be a little tough. Would you, do you have a second month or just one?
Now, we have another. Go ahead, Chris.
We, we could come back with a special meeting if, if you had to push to the 20th or the 27th.
Well, the alternative is that on the 13th, you approve a bond ordinance that gives the, that within certain, very limited parameters, gives the president on behalf, with the advice of the administrator, the right to accept the bid. It's called parameters ordinance, done very often. And that way we could, you could prove it on the 13th of October. We could sell maybe October 20th.
Good.
Yeah.
I think you should do that.
You guys like that?
Yep, I do.
The election will have that much of a, or could have that much of a effect on it that?
I mean, the, the problem, Jack, it's, it's kind of like what happened in February and March. You know, all of a sudden, some sidewinder comes in and the market gets turned upside down. And Kevin can't even bring an issue like this to market. I mean, it does happen.
Right. We just don't know.
You just don't know. So I, you know, rates could go down after the election. I mean, you, you don't know, but that is an event that you may want to stay clear of, I would think.
Yeah. And the parameters ordinance is good for six months in case on the 13th you pass it, things get really, really crazy. Then we sit on our hands till everything calms down and then we come back.
Right.
That's good to know. Good to know. I'd say let's move forward.
It sounds like a plan. Are we all good with that? I see Rob giving me the thumbs up. Andy was waving two before, so I know he's on board. Jack, it's okay. Bob, you're okay?
You bet, you bet.
I can't see everybody on this little screen. And Penny, you're off anyway. So when you're good, okay. Well, there you go. I think we have a policy decision here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
Dog's happy. The dog is moving.
Not my neighbor's dog this time.
Yeah.
Kevin, nice seeing you. Thank you for your work.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks a lot, guys. Okay, well, that's, that's basically all we had this evening, guys. Good work. If there's not any other comments or questions on this item, we can call for adjournment. If I have a motion. Rob, roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lampier? Yes. Trustee Apitoff?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Calardarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Okay, Karen's.
Hey, Rob, one quick thing I wanted to mention about the 9/11.
Yes, certainly.
So as you all know, in years past, we've put out about 3,000 flags to honor the victims of September 11th. And it's a big community event where we get a swarm of people very close together to make that happen in a very short amount of time so we can get the flags up quickly. And they go up on the evening of the 10th and then we take them down on the evening of the 11th. We did not want to create a situation this year where we would have sort of that swarming in a small amount of space. And so what we've done is we're working with the chiefs and the heads of the different departments. We're going to do this as sort of a village led event this year. My family, my son is the sort of organizer of it. My family, my son is the sort of organizer of it. We will, again, organize it, but instead of having an open community flag planting, we're just going to do the flag planting. It's not going to be the full 3,000. We're going to do a pattern that says 9/11 will be big, but it'll be fewer flags because we did the math and without that large swarm, what takes about an hour, hour and a half for the very large group of people could take a, a full day. So you will see a memorial on the green on the 10th and it will go down on the 11th. Here's one of my flag planters.
Great. Awesome.
That's great. Good night.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Next year, we'll be back to normal.
Yep.
So I guess we're good, guys. So have a great, a great evening and we'll see you next. Do we, do we have something next Tuesday, Rob?
Yeah, council meeting.
Yep, regular meeting. Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll see you next Tuesday.
See you next Tuesday.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep.